Really? That's just a time by the first law, right?
Yeah, but that's just the...
Really? Because that's what we have. That's just a time by the first law, right?
Ah, well.
Why?
Yeah, but that's just the...
Oh, no. We said, "We're going to show the Dexter Park." And they did that last couple of days.
Yeah. Not just a peanut jump.
I know. I was like, "Yeah." Yeah. And I was saying, "Okay." We were first here with some of the... Oh, before I look at you. I saw something. Yeah. You remember I've been here for it. I know you have. That's why I love it. And we used to share an office with you. It was only a third of the size it is now.
It started around there was part six. Or was it? Part six from our side. We were earlier. Okay. And I knew that he was prepared for me.
I just wonder about him.
Struggling a lot, I think.
And you were speaking over here tonight. It basically is what you already announced. So I was down in this. It started fine when I'm twenty days today. I see. So it's free cash on your computer right now?
That's your...
You know, babe. I don't know. I haven't met the... Okay. There's one more. I told him he just started. Okay. How's it been? For... It's crazy, really. Yeah. And there's one reason you think you're...
I don't know that he's not...
What are the good laws you're going? Well, the... Why are you... Do you want to make a video? You want us to share what you're doing? So who's thinking at the end? The two of you?
Dr. Castle. Okay, yes. I think that might have been from that...
One thing about it. It's all the first week. Let's get the card. Let's put it in the ordinance. Here's my draft. First part, sorry. We saw also, I think, how we should... Six to zero. Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Bellevista City Council, March 25, 2024. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Council members Snow?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Wysniak?
Here.
Wilms?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Hatchell? Here.
Okay. The first order of business is citizen input. Just as a reminder, speakers get three minutes per person to address the council on any topic of their choosing. And the first person is Chris Nelson at One Harrington Drive.
Good evening. Here to speak again regarding item B on the agenda. Spoke out last month. I don't think it's right for the city to do, but during last month's city council meeting, Councilman Fowler attempted to deflect from comments regarding his behavior. The community observed during the last round of election as well as his unprofessional behavior during STR ordinance passage, which was ruled unconstitutional. Councilman Fowler stating what initially piqued his interest was a news article written on November 16th published in the weekly Vesta. An important citizen could determine this to be a lie because at the November 14th, 2022 work session, two days prior to the article being released, Councilman Fowler painted a similar narrative as a news article. During the November 14th work session, a barrage of unprofessional behavior and accusations were made by Councilman Fowler towards candidate murder, Councilman Snow, and private citizens for making legal campaign contributions to their candidate of choice. A FOIA filing also shows Councilman Fowler digging in on candidate Yandel's filing, November 10th, 2022. The oath of office clearly states faithfully discharge the duties of this office. The definition of faithfully is acting in a manner that is true to facts. Councilman Fowler has repeatedly misrepresented the facts both during the STR discussions and now regarding campaign contributions. And he has used public resources to malign political candidates and city council people and any citizen who makes a campaign contribution to those agencies as political enemies. I urge the city council to table the voting ordinance proposal indefinitely due to the unethical behavior demonstrated by Councilman Fowler, which has misled the general public. I also urge those council members to align themselves with unethical public servants to reassess which direction their moral compass is pointing them to. Thank you.
This is for the record.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kelly Strain of Marianne Lane.
Good evening. Wow. Nothing's changed. I just really wanted to come up here and personally thank Glenn E. Hughes for addressing an issue on our street. It was deteriorating pretty bad. And, you know, cars today aren't very cheap and it's really easy for a vehicle to get damaged when you have potholes in the street. You know, I came up here that week before and the next day I got a call from the city street department promptly addressed the issue, I mean, like that. I've never had that kind of service anywhere I've been, especially from the city council member. So thank you, thank you personally. I wanted to thank you. It means a lot to me, you know? I told my neighbors about it. I told my friends about it, my family about it. You know, Mr. Snow, the same kind of agenda, you know? They're just very personal. They treat you like you matter. I don't get that from the rest of these people. I would know, you know? I know that you probably started off with a really great agenda and good thoughts and good intentions. Don't know what happened along the way or things got twisted and now it just seems like, you know... I wasn't going to come up here and stand here for two minutes and just say nothing and just quiet and just scare you down or, you know, do what you guys did when we came up here and was stumped up, what's going on, not look at you. Are you done yet? So the next person could come up here and share. That's really, really uncomfortable. It's totally rude and very unprofessional. You guys should really take a look at how they do their business and maybe follow suit. I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask questions, you know? You know, if someone's doing a better job than you, I don't know about you, but me personally, I want to be better than the next guy. So I'm trying to be civil and be, you know, I don't want to be announced, you know? So, I don't know. It means a lot to me that people do care and there's two people here that I know personally do care for people in our community. I wish and I pray that each and the rest of you guys will maybe follow suit or maybe ask some questions. Hey, what did you do? Or how do you talk to people? You know what I mean? I mean...
I don't know. Thank you.
No, please.
Now it's time in the meeting for a council member reply if anyone wants to address any of the issues. Waiting.
Mr. Strain, give me your kind words. I want to give all kudos to Karen Hine, our chief superintendent. She had it emailed my inbox about seven a.m. that next morning. She washed at home and I had the work order put in and I'm so just thankful and proud for the leadership of our streets department. It is a very enlightened, it can for that service.
Absolutely. Thank you. I was...
I'd just like to say one thing. First of all, you know, it's kind of the same people that show up every time and deride me, you know, personally. It happens over and over and over. I took my shots, many, 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 day after, I mean, meeting after meeting after meeting. But I also have my supporters and as far as your comments that you made, those are accusations and they're not facts.
They are facts. If I'm not... You're not going to reply? You're not going to...
Uh, please.
You're not going to respond to me and not give me an opportunity to respond to you?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
So they're accusations, not facts.
They are facts.
So, they're, in your point of view, I guess they are, but they're not. So, I've got, I have my supporters, trust me. They're, they're deep. So, I'm just saying, they're accusations, they're not facts. And I would like to say too, as far as campaign contribution reports are concerned, they're for the public to view. Anybody and everybody. And that includes council members or anybody. So I just need all campaign contribution reports looked at like everybody else did. And everybody can come to their own conclusion and decisions on what they, on what they think they see or what they conclude from. So they're maybe, they're, they're public.
And this is a public building, so you're not supposed to be allowed here.
Come on, folks. Point of order. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Larry Wilms.
Just one, I'm coming. We're getting some echo here or feedback. I'd like to thank the staff for being responsive. It isn't often that we're able to respond in that timely manner usually because of the workload that's there. And so sometimes they switch the order of work depending on what they're doing. And I'm just pleased that we were able to satisfy the proper order, if I can.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is action on the minutes. The minutes of February 26, 2024, regular meeting. Is there any comments on that?
Move to a room.
Second.
That's Larry Wilms and Fowler. On the whole ball.
Council members Wilms?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wysniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hatchell?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item is the State of the City report. The State of the City report is on the website. And I'm going to read that report. I'm going to just give a summary. First part of it has to do with the financial condition. And in 2023, operating revenues were 22.9 million. That was a 12.7% increase from the prior year. Operating expenses were 18.2 million and that was 772,000 below budget. So obviously the revenues on the operating side were more than the expenses by a significant margin, which is good. Second item meant to do with the police. As everyone knows, they moved into their new public safety facility in 2023. And recently, the one half mill police bench was passed. I'd like to thank the citizens for that. And Bellevista continues to be one of the safest cities in the state of Arkansas. So we're really pleased with the police performance. Regarding the fire and EMS, we've got a new ladder truck in 2023. That makes our second ladder truck. And we also got a new remounted Bron ambulance in 2023. Fire and EMS made 4,339 calls in 2023. That was an 8% increase over the prior year. And of course, recently, the fire training tower has been substantially completed. So that is a big, big event for the fire department. On CDS and planning, we had 500 new home permits and 9,200 total permits, all in 2023. So they were very busy. The Mercy Way Bridge was completed. That was $7 million for that bridge and city Bellevista paid less than $100,000. Eighty percent of it was covered by a federal grant and 20% by the Walton Family Foundation because the Razorback Greenway goes across the bridge. So we appreciate their generosity. Tandook Creek Bridge was completed. And we have some work going on on hard surface trails with plans to extend the Razorback Greenway up to Rudden Road and also extending the hard surface trail that goes up to Metfield. It's going to go down Commonwealth and up to Falker for a ways. So that's all very encouraging. And as far as the planning division, they were very busy that year. And of course, we have a code survey underway now, which will take about another year from now. It's an 18-month project to fix our building code, building and zoning code. So that's a big project and I think people will be happy to see that accomplished. On the library, our library was quite a bit busier this year. Children's story hour had to be expanded into two sections. And of course, they had an expansion in the parking lot, which is very badly needed in the library. So that was good. The streets, I thought the street department had a great year. They fixed a major call for it on Chelsea and they reopened Dogwood Drive. They had 34 miles of slurry and 11 miles of asphalt. And in the year 2023, they completed 1,418 work orders. You know, the kind of thing Kelly Strain was talking about, is that kind of thing. A lot of different things come up during the year. They really had a spectacular year as far as accomplishing things. I felt it was important to mention the arts council. They had some sculptures, sculptures here at the public safety facility. On the Bluebird Trail, we have some rental sculptures. We have some murals at the library and they still do artist of the month and the yarn bombing each year. So really pleased with their efforts as all volunteer, of course. And as far as mayor and city council, there were 59 ordinances and 66 resolutions passed. And I should say the city clerk and the city attorney because they're deeply involved in all of that, obviously. So it was a very busy year all in all and a successful year. So that's the State of the City report. The next item is financial reports. This is on the city website and was sent to the city council just today. So this is hot off the presses, so to speak. So as I mentioned, operating revenue was up 12.7% to 22.9 million. Operating expenses were 18.2 million and that was 772,000 below budget. I did want to mention the unassigned funds were at 16 million at the end of the year. At the beginning of the year, they were 17.7 billion. There was a decline because of the capital expenditures. And we do have a bunch of capital expenditures coming up this year. So that's why we're still being very conservative with our money. So I will note one thing on the capital expenditure report. Capital expenditures last year in 2023 were 7.6 million and they were scheduled to be 12.5 million. And that's because some things weren't yet completed. So that's one of the reasons why 2024 looks like a challenging year for capital expenditures. So we're in really good financial shape. I feel good about what's taking place there. And as I said, that entire report can be seen on the website as well. Next thing is the Mayor's Monarch Pledge Proclamation. This is actually from March 14. And I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but it's also on the website. I'll read some key points. One of the whereas clauses is, whereas Bellevista, Arkansas has taken the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge to demonstrate the city's commitment to creating a habitat and educating citizens about how they can make a difference at home. And now therefore, I, John D. Flynn, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Bellevista, do hereby proclaim March 14, 2024, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Bellevista, Arkansas. Further, I officially recommit today to continue to take meaningful action to protect the monarch and to leave this legacy to the leaders following after me. I encourage all residents, city staff, and visitors to participate in taking steps to increase the planting of milkweed and that our plants deserve and strengthen the monarch butterfly population. You know, Bellevista's been a monarch city USA for several years. We're a tree city USA. And I think these kinds of environmental things are going to continue to be important, arguably even more important as we grow and have construction and whatnot. It's really important to do things to keep the good environment going. So anyway, just wanted to call that to your attention. So the next item is, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend rules for order in the city here to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title...
Shoumoo. It's right there.
That was Jerry Snow and Larry Wilms. Roll call vote.
Council members Hatchell?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wysniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. The next item is under old business and ordinance amended the code of ordinances of the city of Bellevista to adopt a new Article 10, outdoor lighting to Chapter 109. So they do provide for outdoor lighting regulations for new commercial developments and for other purposes. And this is on second reading. And I believe Larry Wilms still has a proposal. I think it's a little bit different, a proposed amendment.
Actually, if I'm in error in reading through the documents submitted to the work session, I want to copy these. On page two, halfway down under section 109-290, applicability, item number two. The last word in that sentence should be "more" and not "less." And that was a correction that I spoke with Ms. Robertson about. And it was originally proposed to be "more," as the code was. And I changed it to "less" and we discussed it and I neglected to make that correction in my presentation here. So, section 109, 290, item two, last line, end word says "less," it should be "more."
Is there any discussion about the lighting ordinance or the proposed amendments?
Everyone's fine.
I just have a question. I guess, I'm not sure from the work sessions where we're at now to what we have on the agenda. I know that there was comments made by staff or, I just don't know what has been proposed and what has been corrected and changed or whatever, depending where we're at from where we were at.
You mean not counting the amendment?
Correct.
Does somebody from staff want to address that?
Well, I can say that what's in the packet that was on first reading is now on second reading. That Mr. Wilms has had a couple of different proposed, comprehensive proposed changes. He has not moved to amend based on any of those at this point.
Okay. That's what I'm giving now. Thank you.
So it was in the packet is what was in the whole time?
I just wanted to make sure or confirm that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that, Jason. I know the staff is questioning about some of the things in the amendment, but one part I know this, which I think are really complicated things, is it proposes to address pre-existing conditions. And that doesn't strike me as a really good idea in this case.
Could you read that?
Well, part of the amendment talks about specifically in 102-290, add the number five, non-conforming lighting installation, meaning something's already there right now. Such situations will be made to conform with the requirements within one year effective date.
Presuming, Mr. Mayor, presuming that it's non-conforming and it creates a problem. And so an action has to be taken. It's not any non-conforming installation. It's one that creates a problem that's contrary to the ordinance in terms of glare, illumination, that kind of thing, creates a health or a safety hazard. Then the zoning administrator can take action to direct the violator to fix it and there's a 60-day time period. This can only be done after one year of the effective date of the ordinance. So it's not an immediate thing when the ordinance takes effect. It's one year after the effective date. So there's time in there for things to change. As an example, in a year, the lighting fixture may have to be upgraded or replaced anyway. And so it would be upgraded or replaced consistent with the ordinance and it wouldn't fly. But if there is a lighting situation that creates a health or a safety hazard... This can only be done after one year of the effective date of the ordinance. So it's not an immediate thing when the ordinance takes effect, it's one year after the effective date. So there's time in there for things to change. As an example, in a year, the lighting fixture may have to be upgraded or replaced anyway. And so it would be upgraded or replaced consistent with the ordinance and it wouldn't apply. But if there is a lighting situation that creates a health or a safety hazard, it allows us to take corrective action. That may sound inconsistent with what we do with nonconforming structures and uses. Nonconforming uses, if you pass an ordinance that makes it nonconforming, it continues until certain things happen to trigger the correction of that nonconforming use. And the same would happen here. Is that someone would have to provide a complaint or have to be called to the attention of the zoning administrator. And then the zoning administrator would have to validate that issue being a health or safety hazard. And then issue an order to correct. So it's not an overnight thing.
Well, my understanding is the new lighting and everything else that people working in the code are going to do is all going to be as a particular day. People planning want all that to be consistent. Plus, I'm not aware of any lighting problems in Bellevista. And all the examples I got were from other places.
Well, that's kind of what I'm. As it was proposed in its original form, I thought it read very clean. And it just seems like there's a lot of additions that really muddied it up.
So does that, does that fall under the definition of preexisting, nonconforming? Is, you know, where if it's already existing prior to the enactment of ordinance to manage lighting in the future, can we go back and direct people to change lighting based upon a complaint or potentially? And I don't even know who in the state is going to be driving around at night identifying the problems of it.
The, the point of this ordinance was to provide for lighting regulations for new commercial developments.
For new?
For new commercial developments.
Right.
You can, you can adopt as part of your health, safety, and welfare authority certain lighting regulations on how people use current lighting, be it timing or, I mean, there's so there is authority for the city to do that. If you want to pass something that's going to require reconstruction, I think that's more problematic. But, and I think that gets beyond the scope of the title of the, of the proposal listed for you. So I don't know if I answered your question, but usually when we're talking about preexisting, nonconforming, you're talking about a zoning usage, a zoning regulation. This is development regulation related to how new commercial properties are developed in the lighting that they use or are not going to be allowed to use. That's really the full intent of what you've got.
Wendy Hughes?
Does, does staff have a viewpoint on that section, Taylor?
Sorry, I mean, staff's concern is primarily around the one year effective date that was added here. I know I discussed that with Councilman Wills at our meeting, but it's essentially, obviously, staff had not proposed nonconforming clause. They came without one. And it was just going to be a new replacement for new light fixtures was the original intent. But as written, staff's main concern is just the one year effective date because hopefully, within a year, we have a holding zoning ordinance and development ordinance, including a lighting ordinance as well. Because Freezer Nichols, obviously, has already identified that as a, a large missing standard in our zoning ordinance. So that's why I'm here to express.
Mayor? It sounds like we're doing the same thing with the lighting that we did with the driveways. We're making people comply after the fact. Again.
I need to bring, I need to bring something I said. This isn't an adoption or change in the zoning code. I want to clarify that. It is. But so you do have preexisting, nonconforming use standards that, so to the extent, normally this sort of thing would be in a development regulation, but because our code currently is a little filed up, we've got it in zoning, which I think is part of what Taylor has been discussing. So again, nothing in this was intended to require someone even, we're only dealing with new commercial developments, but in any commercial development, to say rip down the parking lot lights and put up a different kind now because we passed an ordinance. We're not doing that. And I'm not sure we could do that.
No, it sounds like that's what Larry's proposing.
I'll let you on that.
No, no, that's not, that's not the intent.
No, no, that's not the intent, but it sounds like the same thing we did to driveways. You had it ahead of time and you don't comply with the law, then we go. The original one pleased it all along. It sounds like you're going to give them a year to comply. Where after the fact, I agree with that as a fact.
Only if there's a reason to do so of being health or safety hazard.
Well, what's the safety hazard? It's a trajectory. The principle's the same. You're making people comply after the fact.
We're not talking about driveways, so we're talking about lighting.
No, we're not, but the principle of what you're doing is the same. You're making people comply after the fact. And granted, the way it's written, that's not a problem because it's only new. But you're dating back.
I'm confused about the driveway. Where's the driveway we're talking about?
We're talking about, we're talking about lighting.
Yeah, we're talking about lighting. And so where's the driveway you came in with lighting? Well, you brought it up.
Yeah, I did, but we make people comply after the fact. And now you're going to do the same thing with your amendment.
I don't know where I came up with something requiring the driveway to comply after the fact. I didn't, I don't know where driveways came from. Where are you talking about?
The principle of the thing.
What principle?
We passed an ordinance and if you didn't comply, you had to upgrade your driveway.
Yes.
Is regarding SB 2 correct?
And now you're coming up with what driveway you're talking about? What driveway ordinance are we talking about? Am I missing something here?
Yeah. Where's, when, when did you pass the driveway ordinance? There's one in the agenda.
Well, we made, well, we made a new one and made everybody comply with what we have after the fact. I don't, I don't know. I know you don't know, Larry, it's just that sometimes we have a little trouble getting through with you. But that's from my point of view. If, if you're going to add something and make you do it after the fact, that's similar to what we did with the other. The way the ordinance is currently written, that's not a problem. If your thing disappears, then I don't have a problem.
I don't, I just want, I wanted to try to provide some clarity. We adopted a driveway standard here a couple of years ago, I think is when it was. That did not have retroactive applicability. That only dealt with new residential constructions. Okay? So that, I don't know where the retroactive application of the driveway grading.
We make people comply after the fact.
Are you talking about driveway grading or are you talking about?
The new driver and the head.
Oh, that was years ago. And that, that, that's if you can't.
And the principle of saying the guy had the driveways for 20 years and now it was suddenly coming after.
Well, that, that wasn't in the nature of the zoning regulation. That was more of the nature of a parking or a business regulation. In other words, we told people.
I'm satisfied with what was originally written. I'm not real satisfied with what Larry wants to do. Well, we don't have anything originally written. I can work one way or the other, so.
So if I, so Councilmember Wills, Larry. I mean, I said before, your propensity for attention with detail is, it's off the charts. I mean, it really is. And what's happened is, and I think Craig is right. Craig is basically the original author, if you will, of this ordinance, right? Bringing it forward to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission went through it. They approved it, adopted it, to pass it on forward to us. And then it seems like often we get caught up in these details. So I'm just going to, one of the very first things is for me, when I read it, one line, that's 289. Point number two, it says, protect drivers, pedestrians, senior citizens, and visually impaired from the glare of nonvehicular light sources. To me, that's self-explanatory. If it, if it strikes somebody's view or causes glare or causes some type of danger, it's self-revident. But then you have from improperly selected place aimed to apply, maintained, or shielded to outdoor lighting features. Well, to me, that's implied in the original statement that was written. We don't need to go into that type of detail about how the placements of light or their aim and all sorts of stuff. I understand that, right? It's, it says implied in the original statement. So kind of to Craig's point, again, I appreciate your input. But I think with all the additional details written in here, it just kind of muddies it up and makes it really hard for people to understand. And this is for future development, basically, is why it was written. And, you know, to help, to help with the lighting in those particular cases. And I think the way it was written, for me, anyway, when I read it, was pretty simple, pretty straightforward. It made boxes into any corners. So I'm good with the way it was originally written, personally. Not, not being derogatory to what you wrote, but it's, it just gets too complicated.
It's been a proposal at the first reading and a refined proposal at this reading. And if I understand, Attorney Kelly, that it hasn't been presented for adoption.
We haven't moved to amend.
Right. And so it's not, it's not a formal amendment at this point. And you can take care of that because I'll make a motion now to amend the lighting ordinance as presented by the document here, with the exception that 109-290, item two, last word, needs to go from less to more.
That's the only change you want to make? Go from less to more?
No.
Yes, because.
Oh, you're changing now.
I feel, you're able to correct it when I.
Yeah, it's changed. It's changed. We want to make all these changes.
If you'd like to strike the, the item number two in the first section, that should just run.
Okay, so that's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, so if there's no second, then the motion fails. And I guess you can decide if you want to go to the third and final and vote on this or want to wait till next month.
I, I think it's been discussed a lot, right? And I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and vote at third and final.
Mayor?
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wazniak.
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, can I just, just for clarification? What is being motion at the moment is what was originally proposed, purely.
The, the original proposal that was on first reading last month and you were co-sponsor of is unchanged. And the current motion on the floor is to suspend the rules of order procedure to go to the third and final reading of that proposal.
Okay. I just, I just want to clarify. I'm, I'm confused and I'd like clarification. There is the original city draft ordinance. There are the amendments that was proposed by me to the lighting ordinance. And there's a third proposal that's attached to our documents. And I guess my question is, the third proposal, I don't know where that came from. But there's a, there's a third item here for the lighting ordinances. And so my question is, what are we, what are we dealing with? And is this a submission by someone? It says a light, outdoor lighting proposal.
I can answer that.
So I don't know where it came from.
So in, in the original packet, in the original packet, Planning Commission had the forward this proposal, which was created by the staff. And that was put, that is put in the packet because that's what guys need to write the official ordinance, which is the very first document on this item in the packet. So when you look at the packet, there's a, there's a Mayor's proclamation and the very first proposed ordinance is the one that's being voted on. So it has the operative enacting language and all of that with the drawings and the place for the mayor to sign and all of that. So the other, there, there's your proposed amendment, one of the original proposed amendments, either that was defeated, was not seconded, or you previously discussed, but does not move. And then the staff notes that I used to draft the legislative document that you have is the first thing.
So the third item is what you used to draft the ordinance from?
That's what I used to, for them, for me to learn what they wanted to do. And it's largely copied from that.
Okay, it looked like it read the same.
It should be.
And, and I thought maybe it was another proposal and so it was not, because we hadn't seen that one before.
Well, I think it's been in the packet.
Only in the work sessions. Only in the work sessions.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and a third and final.
What is it?
Yes, sir.
If this ordinance pertains to the future, future lighting, nothing that we have pending at the moment, then why are we going to the third and final? I mean, once the judge, why not wait for any additional public comment until the next week?
Well, I asked people whether they wanted to go to the third and final and they made a motion and said they did. That's why we go to the third and final. And then we can vote on whether most people think we should go to the third and final or not.
I, I don't know how many calls you've had about it, but I haven't had any about the lighting ordinance, so.
Taylor, was this published, typed to the public? Was there any public comment, feedback on this ordinance at all for the Planning Commission?
I don't think we received any public comment. Or were there published in the packet that you have tonight?
Okay, what, so what I'm going to roll, call vote, I'm going to the third and final. So suspend the rules and go to the third and final.
Councilmember Snow?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. I'll go ahead and read it. Amendment to the code of ordinances since the city of Bellevista to adopt a new Article 10 outdoor lighting to Chapter 109 zoning to provide for outdoor lighting regulations for new commercial developments and for other purposes. Is there a motion?
Well, all I want to say is, you know, to Taylor's point as well. We all know that we're working with a company right now, right? It's going to rewrite our zoning ordinances. So this is going to come up in there. We're going to see their version as it comes forward, too. So this is somewhat temporary, kind of a placeholder until we get that.
A band-aid, there's a problem.
Move to move. Thank you.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Wazniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hughes?
Yes.
Wazniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Here's the next item under Old Business. Is ordinance required candidates for election to any municipal office in the city of Bellevista? In addition to any other requirement of state law to file campaign contribution and expenditure reports with the Bellevista city clerk, insufficient time for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. And this is on the second reading. Any discussion?
I think, you know, we have discussed this, you know, at length, I think. In my point of view, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. We have early voting that begins on a certain day. But campaign contribution expense reports are not required to be submitted until 10 days prior to the general election. And given the guise of full disclosure, I think it only makes sense that those campaign contribution reports are submitted prior to early voting. You know, we have the Ostrich Apoia law in place for our public officials for the state of Arkansas versus like any, any state, United States, I think, will recognize for that, good or bad. And I just think that this falls in line with that. Why this hasn't already been taken up by the Arkansas State Legislature is something I can only guess. I don't know. I know that there has been a question submitted to the state attorney general. As far as I know, we haven't received any feedback, but there really isn't anything as we know this, as we can, or whether we can't. Now, there is some direction and some degree on what cities are allowed to do. And I would just like to say there are like three points I think that came out. But one of the points is people running for elected office in Bellevista, you know, a public office, can actually voluntarily agree with other people running to set expenditure limits if they want to. Is that correct, Jason? I mean, we don't have to do this at city council.
State, state law does give, the state law does give the city by statute certain rights to, to provide certain regulations regarding campaign contribution amounts. And as I've said at prior meetings, I would provide caution to you in trying to go down that particular road just because of constitutional questions related to campaign financial reform at the federal level and, and other camp. at the federal level and, and other campaign finance decisions, which have come down since that particular statute was adopted. But it is in the statute.
And I would just like to say finally, I said, I'm not, I'm not going to go over and over this again for the rationale why, but there is literally not one single person that I have brought this up to that just looks at it and goes, "Just makes sense. Why would you not want to do that?" So, if the state of Arkansas, if our state legislatures want to take it up and do something on their own, and put it in their state statute for elections for cities in, in the state of Arkansas, I think that's great, but I don't know or see why we should, we would weigh around to do it, knowing it's just something that makes sense. So, that's kind of where I am with it, and if anybody has anything to add, that's fine.
Wendy?
I just don't believe that we are the proper body to be regulating this. From the state, absolutely. I'm so glad that there isn't a need to the state forcing our opinions that issues in it happens, but I don't think as a city, we are the right body to basically navigate the election business. That's not our spot.
Chair, Snow?
I think it just makes sense to relabel this ordinance as the dirty politics ordinance. Right? It, this is how dirty and solicitous campaigns begin. It has no purpose other than to satisfy the personal needs of one, making the issue of campaign contributions serve no purpose other than providing information to create rumors, false suspicions about a candidate and their contributions. The most disturbing and disappointing part of this ordinance is that my fellow council members, even if to gamble with the taxpayer's money. The city attorney has said this is not a good idea. The municipal league has said it's not a good idea, yet we go ahead and vote for it anyway, taking the chance that there is going to be litigation filed against it, which again is nothing more than gambling with the taxpayer's money. So, I will move tonight that this ordinance be table indefinitely.
There's a motion, and a second to table the ordinance indefinitely.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm confused. Ordinance, no. Council members, no. You've made some statements that...
We can't hear you.
Turn on the mic. Oh, you've made some statements that seem to be confusing. I don't know if the, our city attorney has said we shouldn't pass this. I think he said we need to use caution until we get the opinion back from the attorney general's office to say whether we have a green light or not to be able to do it.
Well, I'm always happy to answer a question, but, Mayor, your question on the floor is a motion to table indefinitely, and so, really, debate needs to be limited just to whether or not you want to table indefinitely or not. If you don't want to table it, you still want to talk about it, I'd be happy to address it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it is, I have not said don't pass it. I, I have, just, since I'm going ahead and talking, that there is uncertainty, there could potentially be a challenge. What you say about the league, they have, they have suggested they would prefer cities stay out of this, and there's an argument that the city can do it, but it, it is not clear 100%. I think all the lawyers that have looked at it to this point have pretty much said that, and so, it's been, one of our representatives has indicated she's submitted a question to the AG, which is her prerogative, and basically asking that question, and at some point, I guess they'll render another opinion on it. So, but anyway, at this point, Mayor, your question's on the motion to table indefinitely.
We haven't received an answer from the AG's office.
I've not seen one.
So, I guess this follows up, you know, with whether to table or not. A couple of comments made, I, I don't understand at all, which is dirty politics and something, I don't know, misuse of taxpayer funds or something like that. I don't even see how that comes into play, or, I don't know, where, where that's, you know, has any, has any place in this conversation at all. But one of the, one of the comments made during the last meeting was there's some type of election interference. And I don't know, what would you call wanting to lock the source of campaign contributions until after voting begins? That feels much more wrong than it does to go ahead and put the campaign contribution expenditure form out there for people to see. It's interesting, there was a FOIA request that was made this last week, and I really appreciate that, because what it, what it says, it started out, it says, "As a citizen of the state of Arkansas, I have lawful right to this information under the Arkansas Freedom of Information." I have lawful right. So, why would we not want to provide campaign contribution reports prior to an election beginning in the early, early voting period? I don't know what the number is, but it's as high as 50% that takes place before the general election. And by that time, it's, it's too late for people to get feedback on where campaign contributions are coming from, and that could definitely sway a voter's opinion of how they may vote. So, you know, I, I said, I don't know how this is going to interfere in any way, shape, or form.
Well, pardon my answer, Mr. Mayor. State of Arkansas has determined in their opinion that the elections and election procedures and election policies comes under their jurisdiction, the state as well as the county. County and state both have a policy for following the financial contribution, their financial contribution report, which should be sufficient. If anyone wants to see what, whose contributions have been made, who have made contributions, that should not be an issue. It didn't make any issue in the past election. You were able to identify those people that you felt were questionable, that you didn't agree with, that made contributions to certain campaigns. That didn't, it didn't stop you, that had any problem, you had a problem with that. So, I don't see what the problem is now. I don't see the purpose, there, there's no only purpose for this, as I say, it's just nothing but more than the beginning, the opportunity for dirty politics, that's all it is.
Let's go.
Well, yeah, let's go. So, this is on the motion to table indefinitely, and so, yes, means we want to table indefinitely. You know, means you deny, that's all we're voting on. Our roll call, vote.
Councilmembers Wills?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Heinzel?
No.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wazian?
Yes.
Mayor, you may choose to vote in favor if you still desire.
No, I'm not going to.
You know, I got a vote position. So, the motion to table definitely fails, Mayor, a brief agreement.
Okay, I...
So, maybe we're still on third reading, so, can you further debate on third? No, we're on second. Excuse me, then, be third again next month, I'm sorry.
I'll just say, I mean, I don't want to let it roll until next month. I mean, you know, we've still got time, just passing, we've still got 60 days after that, so, we're not under any timeline at this particular point, and maybe we'll get an AG opinion by then.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that we might get an AG opinion, and it's certainly nice.
Has anyone spoken with Representative...
We're, Jack, Magellan, I spoke to her last month. I haven't spoken to her since I spoke to her last month. She indicated to me, I think I reported this last time, that she was, she was sending the request either that day or the next day. I've not seen that, but that, I took her at work, and it is not surprising at all, it's going to take a, a period of time to get any kind of a response.
I may learn something if it's at the end of the week.
Well, I, I would, I wouldn't think 90-day delay between a question and answer on that would, would be unheard of. Just don't know. It's going to be a while.
Okay, so, let me think about it, till next month, I guess, when it goes to third. Okay, new business, ordinance A, amendment in Section 107, 380, land alteration requirements of Chapter 107 subdivisions and other developments in the Code of Ordinances in City of Belavista do modify driveway grade requirements and for other purposes. And I believe this has an amendment in the packet submitted by Councilman Fowler. Go ahead.
No, so, during the work session, in the conversation, I believe that Chris and Doug both, check back, I think Chris stated a desire, it's like, if, if, if this thing goes forward, I believe I asked the question, "Are you completely comfortable with this? Or do you think it's, or do you think it is where it needs to be? Let's make sure we get there before we pass it on this and then have regrets that we left something out, or we needed to make a tweak to it." And both of them were supportive or were desir, had a desire of adding to 107-380.4, calculating the driveway grade, for the intent and purpose of this subsection, the driveway grade requirements above shall be enforced and measured along the center line of the driveway for the first 20 feet from the edge of the street, and then the addition is, "and" for the last 20 feet from the garage or the carport. At no point along the center line shall the grade exceed the limitations provided herein. So, it was just that part of adding the last 20 feet from the garage to the carport, that's what they wanted to add, so that is a proposed amendment. So, if anybody wants to have a conversation about that?
There, there's more in the written amendment than just that. There's also to further amend the...
Oh, further amend the proposed ordinance by adding Section 2, what shall read as follows. Section 2, not to be codified, the provisions of this ordinance shall be applicable to the extent its provisions are less restrictive to building permits issued on or before the effective date of this ordinance. So, anything that's already in play, it's not retroactive, you don't have to go back and, they don't have to go back and fix it.
So, have you moved the adoption?
I just wanted to read what it is, so everybody could understand what was added.
Yeah.
It's the last 20 feet of, of the driveway from the road to the carport.
And it's retroactive, it helps you.
Pardon me?
It's retroactive, it helps you, you as builder or the homeowner, depending on how you look at it. Wendy?
So, I did this the work session, but I have to listen to it, and this, this seems online. And the original intent, I think of the grade, the original ordinance was to, because of the constant circle, that 40% of the visitor was, maybe I shared it out, caused all this with unusable driveways, unusable garages, and this was back, like, to the original intent. I know the planning commission, uh, seemed to kind of change their direction during the meeting, their, their session, and stuff. I think this is great.
I did want to clarify that Chris Brackett, Doug Tab, and Taylor Robertson all, all wanted it the way you had proposed this amendment.
Yes.
They all made that very clear. Jim?
I don't have a problem with the first 20 feet being flat, but why are we taking 20 feet off the other side, too? We have 20 feet on both ends.
We start, we start...
Right? That's right. We've got a... We're going to go with the 20 feet off the front end, because one of the things Ellis was big on is get the cars out of the streets so the emergency vehicles can get around. So, why do we have to mess with 20 feet on the other side?
Because the original intent of the ordinance was to make it where you have usable garages and driveways all the way down, and because a lot of driveways are about 40 feet in that edge or less, this is kind of cover, and that way you can have 20, 20 feet, and then spike it down to a 40-degree angle, like a constant circle.
Okay, the guy buys his life for $10,000, he finds himself a builder, he picks out a plan, he sticks the house in the lot, and he knows before he opens up the first little bit of dirt that my driveway is going to be steep. So, why are we telling him he can't do it? It's his driveway. He knew upfront that it's going to be a doosy other driveway. You look all over town, there's a dozen of them within three blocks from the house. I can live with the 20 feet for emergency vehicles, but that's where it should end. If he knew it when he built the house, he knew it when he got his plans, why are we messing with the rest of his driveway? Regardless of how steep it is, and if he grabs both hands and build another car when he goes in, look here, he knew when he built the house.
Well, the exact situation that actually occurred in real life was that a guy bought a house without physically being there, and then found out that you couldn't get a car to the garage.
Well, whose fault is that? It's not our fault.
I think, um, planning commissioner Dool, I think that's her name, um, she had a point also saying that we, yes, you might buy a house, and that would be a big, big owner, but you aren't going to live in that house forever. You're going to move, you're going to die. So, this is having the house after you, and having the possibility of, having the possibility of unoccupied homes, that are empty and rotting and decaying, I think was what, her concerns, which she mentioned this during the work session.
You can't, and I, at least in my mind, you can't give me a real logically answer for why should we mess with somebody's driveway on the first 20 feet? He knows it's steep before he builds it, he knows it's steep if he rebuy it, he knows that? Why are we messing with it?
We mess with it because we have unscrupulous builders in Belavista that caused the issue with the house that Mr. Snow brought to our attention over on the east side, it's not far from where you are.
How do you show me a dozen of them?
But in this particular one, it, it's close to the road, and so, if you're lucky, it's 20 feet from the edge of the pavement to the face of the wall in the garage, and so, you go off the edge of the pavement, and you actually go like this, and now, the top of your car tops out when you try to get into the garage, so you can't get into the garage with the vehicle.
So what? He knew the heck out of it.
Well, but here, the builder did it this way because it saved you money. He sold the house, and now the cars are parked outside, I think, at least at the time it was over by it, and it was the one that caused this issue to come before us in the first place.
Well, I can show you a house, if the guy misses his driveway, he ends up on the second floor. So, there's not one flat spot in this driveway, and it curves and everything. But he knew ahead of time when he built the house, he had a problem. So, why are we messing with the bottom of the first 20 feet? Answer me that. Why are we messing with somebody regardless after the first 20 feet?
We need to be able to get off of the roadway safely.
Yeah, 20 feet, I'm giving you that.
And then we need to be able to get into the, into the structure and the last 20 feet, so you have to have within a reasonable grade for that last 20 feet, and then you would get the vehicle into the garage.
But why, why does that have to go in the garage?
Okay, Wendy, here's...
So, maybe...
When there are two amendments, how do we go about figuring it out?
Well, these are together in one amendment, it's one amendment.
Okay, but there's Mr....
There's two amendments.
Oh, okay.
There's two amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, uh...
Who was on that amendment, everyone?
So, no one has moved, and then have one yet. So, they'll, you'll just have to, someone will move the first one, there'll be a debate vote, then somebody will move the second one, and a debate vote.
No, yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Hold on, wait. No, I mean, yeah, you like, no, my core answer was about this. Building ordinances are putting play to protect the consumer.
Protect the public.
Protect, protect the public. And so, and, and it feels like you're assuming, it feels like that you're talking about a person who picks out a lot, picks out a builder, and then builds a custom-built home, and they're fully aware. Well, that's not the case with most, most of the houses that are built in Belavista. They're built by contractors, and they're built really quickly, and they're built in any grade of anything that they can get by with. Not all builders are like that. There are a lot of really great builders here in Belavista, but there are some, and I know for a fact they will get by with every little thing that they can, only for the consumer, only for homeowner, or somebody might buy a house silently, see that comes here, and you say, "Well, that's on them." You know what? I don't buy that, because you, you, you can't think of, you can't cover everything. I understand why we're talking about the last 20 feet, to get the car into the garage. And again, it's protect the consumer today and downstream and into the future. And we, we can't keep letting goofy things like this happen and take place. I mean, there are, there are just certain things to me that make sense, and this is like one of them. And by the way, the house that Mr. Snow found out and fingered that can't believe he got, by the way, that's not the only one, there are some others that are built as well. And all the cars are parked outside, like, on the street, you know, because they can't get their car into the garage, and it might be the first 20 feet, it might be the last 20 feet.
And it's... And it's, I refer to, they all keep their cars off the street because they build the extra pad.
So anyway, this is, this is an addition that was requested by members of CDS. And these are the people that are into this every day and see this, these situations every day. And they think it needs to be fixed. And let's, we're going to fix it, let's take care of it now.
And the fixing is the first 20 feet and the last 20 feet.
Yes.
The proposed fixing.
Man, I mean, maybe that thing is slow, you know, in between, I guess, but those two 20 feet, let's at least take care of that, I guess. I don't know. So this is the First Amendment's in play, and I guess we would have to take up Larry's next.
Would you want to make a motion?
To clarify, I have two parts. Hey, 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 can I, can I stop you for a second? I'm going to speak up on behalf of the clerk.
Thank you.
Before any of you speak, you have to be recognized by the mayor. And when you have a floor, you continue to have a floor until you yield the floor, and the mayor recognizes somebody else. So that's how the order of recognition proceeds, and in particular, when you're speaking over each other. I don't know how she's going to make minutes of that. So I'm just going to remind everyone of the rule, because I don't have a gavel. But I just want to say that because I know that you're getting quite anxious about trying to decipher what we're talking about. So I just wanted to add that.
The mayor must, the mayor must recognize a council member before he or she speaks.
Mr. Wells?
My amendments will fit with the one that's being proposed initially. It's just an addition on the last word, on the last sentence of my report, so.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Just to clarify, I would like to make a motion to approve the, this amendment for, section four.
And not recognized.
What am I saying, Larry?
No, go ahead, very clear.
Make a motion to approve the amendments, or the amendment, Councilman Fowler's amendment as proposed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So was Mr. Hansel and Wendy Hughes. Roll, vote on whether amendment number one should be, the Fowler amendment.
This is clarified, Fowler amendment, we're voting on.
Yes.
The motion was Hansel, the second was Hughes. Councilmember Snow?
I'm going to abstain as it's born.
Okay. Hughes, yes. Wasniak?
No.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes. Motion carries forward to one and with one abstain. So that's the First Amendment. Mr. Wells with delay. And Mr. Snow?
I just got a question in, in the amendments as well as the second amendment, which I think Mr. Wells' amendment may, may deal with that. But I went with Doug to look at some of these driveways. And it looks like that in Belvista, the only way that a, an ordinance or any kind of regulation regarding driveways is going to require a lot of administrative discretion. I mean, we looked at some driveways, they're in grade on one corner, but the opposite corner of the driveway next to the street may be four degrees, four to five degrees off from the required grade. I mean, it depends on the way the street lays, the way the street pitches, the, and I talked to one gentleman today who says that he's getting prepared to build a new house, but the driveway is going to be about 200 feet long. And going to go, I think, down, maybe downhill, to a, maybe to a lake lot. I don't know how you're going to, how's that particular driveway going to follow the grade requirements?
Well, this particular ordinance with the amendment that was just passed covers the first 20 feet and the last 20 feet, and it makes it very clear that you measure it from the midpoint of the driveway, from the middle.
So like in the driveway that's 200 feet long, the first 20 feet is not way that it's going to be in grade, that first 20 feet. I mean, it's going, it's going downhill. Plus, what I think what we're dealing with in Belvista now, a lot of the good lots, a lot of flat lots are gone. And now we're dealing with, with lots that are going to be, houses that are going to be built in a 45-degree incline. And maybe even more.
I agree with you that it's a very challenging situation, and that's why we consulted with all the people in CDS that were most familiar with it in trying to figure out best way to approach it. I agree with you, it's a challenging problem.
But it would appear that, would appear that, as I've said, that there needs to be some type of administrative discretion in dealing, allowing the director of community development and possibly the engineer to sign off on something that's saying that they agree that the circumstances are such. I know Doug and I discussed the term, a, a functioning driveway. The driveway may not be exactly great, but it's functioning in that you can get, you can get, you can go off, you can go to, you can get to the house and cars are off the street, but yet it does not create any unnecessary obstacle or unnecessary means of getting into the, to the driveway or getting into the house. The driveway is functional, but it's not exactly within grade.
Okay, Wendy Hughes?
I think that is addressed in the actual ordinance. Taylor, is it section two administrative modification? And it has on the building order document. Speak on that, please.
Yes, so this does have an administrative authority built into it. Our current ordinance also has an administrative authority, but that was part of a large amount of discussion that we have of this. It's not enough currently. We have a 12% hard limit and then a 2% administrative variance. That's what's codified right now that we're practicing. So Chris Brackett, our engineering, CDS staff can administratively vary a driveway grade up to 14% so long as there is a hardship there, basically saying that the lane cannot be developed or used without this administrative variance. That was the main point of discussion is that administrative variance was not large enough. So not only did we increase the driveway grade from 12% to 14%, we also increased the amount of authority that Chris Brackett would have or city engineer. So if it's downhill, this, as you guys are reading tonight, if there is a hardship, they can go to 17% downhill. If it's uphill or an elevated driveway, then Chris can consider administratively in-house up to 20%. So there is an administrative authority vested within this current ordinance.
I guess I'm not following, when you take a 200-foot driveway that's going down to a lake, to a lake house, I'm understanding exactly, I mean, it's obviously going to exceed that 20% variance of it.
So we would only look at the first 20 and the last 20 if this was approved. So the other 160 feet in between, we wouldn't enforce or even look at. We just make sure that the car's not scraping or is it 17%? If the administrative variance is even preferably 14% off the street, so they would need to probably grade whether that's cut or fill, which is allowed and supported by our ordinance if it's supporting the driveway. You know, if it's not at natural grade at 14% currently, and the same with the house, they may need to fill to reach that FE or the finish floor elevation of the house to make sure it's not 14%.
So if I'm standing corrected, then like in this instance I just described, then if you get down to the bottom or down to the lower level where the house is going to be built, if you've got 20 foot there that is flat or that is accessible to the garage, then that 160 feet to, from there to the top is not an issue.
We will not even look at that 160 feet if you guys adopt this ordinance tonight. We would all look at the first 20 and the last 20, but that 160, we're not touching it.
Okay, I understand.
So the point is, you can get a waiver before the planning commission if you have certain circumstances. But we're trying to write an ordinance that would cover, you know, 96, 95% or whatever the situation. So people don't have, right now, people are going to the planning commission, right and left, trying to get waivers. We're trying to make a rule that will work for the builders, so they don't have to do that.
So if I'm wrong with the ordinance that is currently in play, it's 20 to maximum 14% for the entire driveway, right?
Correct.
Even if it's 200 feet?
Right.
So this is a huge allowance to a builder or a homeowner for everything in between. Because before it applied to the whole, whole thing.
Correct, that's the goal that we want to do some part of.
Mr. Wells?
I think the thing we need to recognize in considering this, it may seem severe, the numbers that are being proposed. I spent some time with Mr. Tapp in the field last week. And we looked at driveways that fell within these parameters. And some of them were long, more than 40 feet long, and some were short. Probably not much longer than a vehicle length to get from the edge of the road into the building. And the parameters in those examples that we looked at certainly were workable and would be addressed and made possible by this ordinance's passage. The concern that I have for my amendment is that when the, when you're looking at the situation where it's a downhill, street is here, house is here, is that if you just take it straight down to the garage, it'll be a slope going downward all the way. And if you don't intercept the water that comes down, and in my driveway, I'm below the street, not very steep, but it's probably eight feet. But the water from the street comes down because there's no ditches along either side of the road. And so the roadway water, the roadway slopes this way in front of my house. So the water from the hill comes down, the other side of the street comes down, the foot across the street comes down my driveway. I have a depression before it gets to my garage so that prevents the water from continuing to flow into my garage or into my house. So that is one of the issues that I think we need to protect the homeowner from and the unscrupulous builder from not recognizing that water coming down a downslope driveway needs to be intercepted and diverted away from the garage floor. The way they build the houses now, it's on a slab. So the garage floor and the house slab, the house grate inside are all the same. So once it gets into the garage, depending how severe the rainfall is, how high the hill is, and how much water comes down the driveway, you could have, you could flood the garage, literally. And so my proposal is to put in a drainage swale or something to divert the water in front of the garage, at least a foot and a half away from the building base. So that's one, one change. The other one is to add at the end of item four that it needs to be authorized by the engineer in the approval documents. In other words, it's not something that's a word of mouth thing. There has to be some, some tracking of the documentation as real, all that implies. So that being said, we have the best lots I've already been built on in Belvista. We have the poorest lots remaining, and they're remaining because they are more costly to develop. You have to put in more courses of brick or block on the house to bring the grade up if it's below the street. You may have to do some grading on the, on the building pad area if it's above the street to make it work, in order to make it usable. And so all we're saying is that we're looking out for the property owner from the unscrupulous builder that doesn't follow common sense.
Mayor, question to Taylor, is there anything that's written in the ordinance now that controls the drainage coming toward a house that's kind of already in play?
We currently already, this is a very basic requirement that we already put in most of our GEC permits, the grade intervention control permit. If it's a downhill house, most of the time, 9.9 times out of 10, we are requiring a drainage swale or some kind of drainage mitigation to keep runoff from going into the garage. Whether it's a front strain, swale, whatever it be, that is already our number one requirement typically that we're already enforcing. And that is checked for typically at the CVO by our inspectors as well. Our ordinance and I believe other requirements as well outside of our ordinance are already required. You can't direct runoff onto adjacent neighbors as well. So that's another common drainage swale requirement we already have in place for the GEC.
So this is written somewhere else in our code, essentially?
It's not written, I don't believe.
Not in our current ordinance. It's just a basic requirement of development staff review to make sure that houses aren't getting runoff from the home. That's one of the number one things, one of our number one job duties that we have to review these kinds of proposals.
So would it be helpful to write this into our ordinance and codify it?
It wouldn't matter if it was. I'm sorry about the question.
So would, I mean, would it be helpful if we would codify this, write this into our ordinance?
Not, staff does have a concern where it's currently proposed to be placed. It's right where we're doing it right now, and Engineer Brackett and I kind of discussed as well, because they also had the, there is some concern placing it right here if it is going to go here. An additional requirement to driveways on top of the grade in the land alteration section, we have some concerns with that.
If I might make a suggestion, if, if people feel they need to pass this to help, help a situation, you could go to third and final and then consider Larry's, take some time to have CDS review it and consider Larry's amendment next month.
Now, this is a good idea, and I think, Larry, I think your points are well taken. And actually, Doug, I'm running around, I think a lot of people made trips around with him by now. And there's a house actually on my street where he was looking at the drainage of the driveway coming down and had concerns of it going in the garage. So I think it's a legitimate concern, but if you're concerned about where to put it in the code, maybe we could have that conversation this month and you could propose it next month and we could take that.
So I want to talk to you a little bit about, we do amend things and we have some broad authority to amend. But you do have to keep it within the subject matter of the title of the proposal that has it's written. So this is, this proposal is to amend the driveway grade requirements. So if we want to start talking about driveway drainage requirements, and drainage is dealt with extensively in other parts of the code, I think we may be talking about more than one topic. And so our ordinances can only deal with one topic at a time. Now, yes, the topic is driveways, and I think we probably could draft a title that would do that. But we're really talking about a whole different proposal rather than just changing what you got in front of you.
Thank you for that, Doug.
No, no.
Larry?
I always go on my proposed amendments.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler in second. I have Mr. Wells. This is a vote on the motion to suspend the rules and vote to third and final.
Councilmember Wasniak?
No.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow, Steve Hughes?
Yes.
And Wasniak? Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't already, okay.
Motion go to third and final, carry four one. Oh, yeah, I didn't read it for a third time. Amending section 107-380 land alteration requirements of chapter 107 subdivisions and other developments in the code of ordinances of city of Belvista to modify driveway grade requirements and for other purposes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. So we'll need a roll call vote on the motion to approve.
Councilmembers Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
No.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
I'm going to say it again.
A motion carried four to one with one abstaining. Okay. Next one is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group with a total amount of $53,742 for the purchase of one Chevrolet Tahoe special service vehicle for use by the fire department.
Move to approve, second.
This is Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. Any discussion or roll call vote?
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Tatum Motor Company of Anderson, Missouri with a total amount of $47,950 for the purchase of one Mahindra 6065 cab tractor with loader for use by the fire department.
Move to approve. Ten.
That was Mr. Wills and Mr. Wasniak. Any discussion or, okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with FTG Limited in the amount of $58,980 for mowing and landscaping services for city facilities.
Move to approve, second.
Does Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Wills?
May I just real quick, Mayor? I just want to say, just for the benefit of a few public members that might be hanging on or watching this, a lot of these things that are going on right now, these items, they were actually approved in the city budget at the end of the year for 2024. So essentially, they've already been approved, but we have to go ahead and, you know, approval by resolution, that's required, anything about, what, about $35,000?
Yeah, plus we went over them in the work session, as you know.
Yeah, we were during the work session, yep.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract processing company named Seattle, Washington, in the amount of $61,371 for the purchase of one slip-in asphalt hot box for use by the street department.
Motion to approve, second.
Was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Wills? Oh, Larry Wills?
This is a budgeted item in the capital project list for the street department, but it will help them become more efficient in their processing and repairs of streets. So it's a benefit to everyone out there that's complaining about hot holes.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive Group of Siloam Springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of four 2024 Dodge General all-wheel drive pursuit vehicles in a amount not to exceed $160,000 for the police department.
Move to approve, second.
That was Mr. Snow and Mr. Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Yes.
Wasniak?
I'm sorry.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. Now, I can declare a vote.
Sorry, motion carried six to zero. It was appropriate, the motion, a second, ordered by two former police officers. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with General Data LLC pursuant to an Omni-Appliance Cooperative Purchasing Agreement in a amount not to exceed $89,000 for the purchase of IT infrastructure for the police department with associated services and site action.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Snow. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Turkey Mobile Inc. through a NASCO Cooperative Purchasing Agreement in the total amount of $84,772.34 for the purchase of 23 mobile computers, tough hooks.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Snow. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Raymond James and Associates Inc. the service of municipal financial advisor to the city.
Move to approve, second.
That was that, Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Snow. Yeah.
What is your?
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor's appointment of Barbara Kate Felton to the Bell Vista Arts Council to fill a non-expire term ending April 22, 2024, resolved from the resignation of J.D. Fortillo. And further approves mayor's appointment for her to fill a full term thereafter ending April 22, 2027. We included, this week, we included a resume, it wasn't in last week, and I wanted to introduce Felton, let's see her. If you want to stand up. I asked her to come, and she just sat there a lot, so we want to introduce you to her.
I'd like to thank Ms. Bertol for her service in the past and welcome new young lady to our Arts Council. Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it very much. We just had a artist of the month a few days ago, and I think Donna Kaiser would have been here, but she was struggling with some help, and she was still.
And I, as I, we set up our work session too, but just to make sure here, it's phenomenal what the Arts Council does. I'm long way, I mean, they are so active and so grateful to the community, really. It's terrific, so thank you guys.
And apparently they're supposed to sit through long meetings. Motion to approve.
Second.
Larry said so move on that second.
Okay, Mr. Wills and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointments of Tim Hall and James Schlenke to the Bell Vista Board of Construction Appeals, and Tim is up for a new term, Mr. Schlenke is new. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Snow and Mr. Wills? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the 2024 city budget to reappropriate unspent donation revenue to various departments from 2020 straight. This is donations from the citizens, and I believe it adds up that you have a chart, $89,000.
$87,000, yeah. Yeah. No, it really is impressive, you know, the residents of Bell Vista, just how community conscious they are, how willing to donate, not just their money, but their time. Anyone that gets the weekly Vista as well, and you know, I have a big comment in this regard, I meant to. But this community is most unbelievable in, in, just people are willing to be active in the community and do positive things. If you are living Bell Vista and you can't find something to do or something to be a part of that's positive, you're not looking very hard. So, and this is just another one of those things with the financial support for that comes in, $87,000 is really impressive.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yep.
Yes.
And Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution expressing the opinion of the city council on nonpartisan body, that citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of partisan and special interest group campaign contributions during Bell Vista nonpartisan municipal elections. Is there any decision?
All I'm going to say about this, because I am moving table until next month, but this is just my personal belief, but I don't believe any decisions made on a city level should be based on ideology, partisanship, or special interests, period. We are a nonpartisan party, and our decisions should be based on homework, legwork, and hard work. So having said that, because we table the campaign contribution ordinance to third and final, we didn't move to do it, but we just decided to go to third and final. I'm going to move to table this until, I think, it will be.
Will you give a vote on that?
Yes, that was Mr. Fowler and second by Mr. Hanchel. Roll call vote.
This is some motion to table to the head, or grab your hand.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Announcements next city council work session at 5:30 p.m. Monday, April 15, at Bell Vista Police Training. Next city council record meeting at 6:00 p.m. Monday, April 22, at Bell Vista District Court. Planning commission work session at 4:30 p.m. Thursday, March 28, at Bell Vista District Court. Planning commission record meeting at 4:30 p.m. Monday, April 8, at Bell Vista District Court. Board of Construction Appeals, 3:00 p.m. Tuesday, April 9, if necessary, in Fire Station Number Four, Conference Room 1639, Fort Hills Boulevard. And I want to remind you, this Saturday at 10 a.m. at Allen's, is the 60th Literica. Thank you, meeting, and adjourned.